All the meetings order. Welcome, everyone. We respectfully acknowledge that the County of Halliburton is located on the twenty two Michi Sea Gag territory and in the traditional territory of the Michi Sea Gag and Chipewa Nations collectively known as Williams Treaty First Nations. We acknowledge the shared presence of the indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as stewards of lands and waters since time immemorial. Is there any disclosure or appear any interest? See approval of the agenda.
Um, that the May fourteenth, twenty twenty five Halliburton County Council Agenda be approved.
Someone so will move with councillor Carter, second by councillor Daye. All in favor? It's carried, thank you. This morning, councillor Eorn, the annual presentation with Jane, Jane, Jason St Pierre and Lisa Severston. And Paula Preston.
Good morning. All right, thank you very much. Good morning, everybody, and thank you for the invitation to Halliburton County. Lisa and I and Paula always like to spend some time up here in the county and got to spend the evening in one of the local resorts there that were kind enough to open to house us last night. So it was a nice evening and we always appreciate the invitation. So thank you. We're going to just on our annual update, we wanted to share some progress reports with the with the county council and with any opportunities to ask questions. So we have a maybe just the next slide, please. Our agenda is fairly light for this one. We want to give opportunity if there is conversations or questions that may occur to give some time to that. So today we will go through the overall update, just to give status on that. Uh, our strategic plan. So last year, uh, we did through our board, we did change our strategic plan and issued a new five-year plan, and I believe that would have been done after we would have met with county council. So we'll just an update on that and then lots of time for questions after. Just the next two slides, please. So just on the project itself, we always like to just give a refresher on what our goals of the program are. Um, so our overall project goals here in the cell gap project for Eastern Ontario is to achieve ninety-nine percent coverage where people work, live and travel that they're able to make a telephone call. Um, ninety-five percent of that same footprint area where we'll have standard definition access, which would allow for um, basic data support, email, uh, web browsing, social media services, those types of applications. And eighty-five percent of that coverage area where we have high-definition services, which allows for more data-intensive type applications such as uh, video streaming. Um, we often use it where the paramedics can can actually use those types of services to start having communication with the hospital when they when they're on route, uh, so we can have real-time communications and data to be traveled and transferred. Next slide, please. The financials, we always have to uh, bring up this fun slide as well every year. So I know for many of you, you've seen this several times, but just as a refresher, uh, our project is a three hundred million dollar investment uh, in Eastern Ontario, which is a one-of-a-kind type of investment between in-kind contributions and financial support. We are receiving seventy-one million dollars from the province of Ontario, just around seventy-one million dollars from the federal government of Canada, uh, just over ten million dollars from the partnership of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, as well as Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus. And Rogers Communication, who is the successful winner of our RFP, is making a minimum one-hundred-and-fifty million dollar investment in Eastern Ontario. Next slide, please. On the project itself, uh, this is just a, I like to call this the measles map because it's not a good joke, actually, these days with everything that's going on, but my apologies. Uh, it shows the coverage footprint, the number of towers that we are building in Eastern Ontario, and this is not a small undertaking that the team is working through. Uh, a team of twelve people right now looking to to build out this project. So on the new builds, we have two hundred and fifty-eight new sites that are being built throughout this project. This is the life cycle of the project. Three hundred and eleven uplifts, and an uplift is where there was service before, but it was an older antiquated type of system LTE or three G. Those systems are being um, upgraded into the five G spectrums. And seventy-four colocations, and a colocation is where there's an existing tower, and in this case Rogers is putting their equipment on that tower to give competitive footprint into those areas. Um, one of the things we've been talking about is is um, under the provincial programs, whether it's ASAP or others, is there is a push for broadband. Although our project's initial purpose was to provide those first three indicators, the voice, the HD and the standard definition, some of those towers are able to provide uh, wireless internet services. And we were actually hearing from residents where they are making the calls into Rogers and being connected into fifty-ten type services through wireless services. Although it's not the purpose or scope of our project, it has become an additional benefit through the program and delivering those services. So we often mention residents there, go on the Rogers site, or if they want to inquire, they can find out if they can get the wireless internet as well. Next slide, please. So if we focus where it really matters here, which is in Halliburton County, um, we we look at the investment on this and it's just a very basic uh, type of ROI that we've done at this point. We will be doing a more in-depth uh, ROI at the end of the project, but just from a conceptual perspective right now, the county itself invested about four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars into this project, and you're gonna have about a thirty-point-six million dollar infrastructure bill through this. So when we look at that return of investment, we're about sixty-nine to one, so fairly good return on the funds that were provided. If we look at the county itself, um, I can't see the numbers right now because of that, but we look at the total project, we have twenty, really can't see this now. We have twenty-nine towers that are going to be built through uh, Halliburton County. Um, how many of those are finished? Four? Six, yeah, say, sorry, six of the twenty-nine have been have been completed now. And then we've got the upgrades, there's twenty-one that'll be done, those are a hundred percent completed to date. And on the colocations, we have four that are be finished, and three of those four are finished now. So we are seeing progress, not the progress I'd like to come to the county council with to share at this point, but we are seeing some positive progress throughout the project. So if we look at overall, about fifty-six percent of the sites are in service. Next slide, please. Just on the overall construction plan, so uh, previous to year four, we'd built seventy-seven brand-new sites and fifty-four colocations. Uh, year four, which is the year we're just finishing now, we had forty-four sites completed as well as thirteen colocations. So to date, we're at a hundred and twenty-one sites finished on new sites, as well as is a little bit off, we're about a hundred and twenty-nine sites now that are finished and sixty-four colocations finished. We have a very aggressive plan. If you look at the year five, a hundred and thirteen sites that we're looking to get built, we do have a number of those sites in construction now, and we are trending towards positive results there, as well as the eight colocations. So overall, we have uh, from a project perspective, about forty-seven percent of the project in service for the new builds and eighty-six percent of the colocations. Next slide, please. Now here's where it really matters again, so the actual construction plan. So if we look at the colocations for Halliburton County, the one remaining is to go in service this year in the Algonquin Highlands. So uh, I believe that is on track as far as last update we had. Uh, the challenge, though, you'll see is that most of the new sites now, we have slated into twenty-twenty-six. And the purpose or the one on the purpose, the reason for this is we've had a challenge trying to find suitable locations to be able to host towers, which met the network requirements and also met our TPA agreements and a number of other agreements around um, private sector or private property availability um, and items like that. Overall, on the LUAs, though, we are making fairly good progress on that. We only have five sites that we're left to secure in Halliburton County. Two of those are uh, going through the LA process, LUA process, and we're waiting for sign-off, and we have three that are still a little bit further down, whether it's in the consultation or we're working with MTO to try to get uh, proper accesses. So things are progressing. We are targeting to have this all finished by the end of June. It's a bit of an ambitious target, but uh, we are pushing hard to try to get those finished, so that we are in a position to have these towers up and running by the end of July twenty-twenty-six. Next slide, please. There's a twenty, a couple twenty-twenty-fives in there, but still mostly twenty-twenty-six. Next slide, please. This map here, we like to share, um, this is showing our our propagation testing that was completed in the fall of twenty-twenty-four. On the left-hand side, this is where we're currently sitting from a high-definition coverage perspective. The slide on the right is the projected coverage when we're finished, based on our current footprint of towers, where they'll be located, as well as the propagation testing that. So when we look at that, uh, even where we've, and the slide I'd like to put into this, we're missing is where we really started back in twenty-twenty, when we started to look at this to to show the amount of white that would be on there. Um, that will be perhaps at our next presentation, but we are making really good progress in our objectives of hitting that eighty-five percent target for high-definition coverage. We do feel, based on current testing and models, that we should be able to exceed those targets in this project. Next slide, please. This is a similar map, we just wanted to share this, a little bit of the twenty-twenty-one data, so it shows on the the primary or major roadways what the coverage would have looked like back in twenty-twenty-one. The orange areas are poor service or no service at all, uh, and we can see the difference between that drive test set uh, data in twenty-twenty-one to the work that was done in the fall of twenty-twenty-four. And for this is actually a physical drive test of those roadways where data is collected to test the signal strengths and signal power um, against the coverage expectation. So again, making good progress, um, and still quite a bit of work, though, left to be done. Next slide, please. Well, Lisa and I were just talking about this uh, yesterday afternoon, uh, we were wondering why we seem so tired these days, but the last couple of minutes, uh, couple of months have been quite a whirlwind in a lot of community activity. Uh, yesterday, we did have the opportunity, I didn't personally, but Paula and Lisa were able to meet with Minden Hills and had some great conversation there, so we thank you for inviting us out for that discussion. Um, but a lot of time has been spent as we get closer to the the areas we're into now are really the tough ones, where we see a little bit more opposition, a little bit more clarity is required. Um, and there's a lot of time being spent now on educating and discussing um, the where the footprints are, why they're going to be there, and ensuring that people are really understanding why this project is going forward. It has been five years in the works, um, but now it's really where we're getting into the the tough areas, and it's taking a lot of time from the comms team and the duty-to-consult teams to to educate and communicate the messaging of the project. So a lot of time being spent with uh, federal provincial leaders, especially now with there's been a change in the government, where uh, our programs moved from MOI into Ministry of Energy and Mines, so we're working closely with them now to bring them up to speed on what our project is, as well as working to try to support them, some of the ASAP projects, which is the uh, the rural broadband from the province, so uh, working with them on some of that. Uh, we spend a great deal of time with some of our indigenous community groups as well to make sure that they are aware of the project and what the benefits may be and uh, mitigations and and conversations with them as well. So a lot of effort being done by the comms team to ensure that we are getting the messaging out there and that we're available if questions come up, that we can ensure that the people have the proper information. Next slide, please. Just the timelines and next steps, so upgrades have been completed. Uh, the land use authority, we're getting close, uh, end of June is our goal to have that finished. We are down to our final seven, eight, somewhere in that range of two hundred and fifty-eight, so making good progress, but we are getting tight on time to get those finished. Indigenous consultations, we are in discussion all the time, that's a continuous uh, discussion and and communication path that's ongoing. New tower construction, we are looking to be done by July of twenty-twenty-six. The announcements, this has been a bit of a challenge for us, as there's been two elections recently, so uh, those have not been as uh, as often as we had hoped, but we are looking here probably June, probably not July, but June, to get an announcement out with the provincial and federal representatives as well. And then we continue to look at other initiatives, uh, the EORN model that we have today, we are uh, supporting the program, the project till twenty-thirty, so we continue to look for other regional opportunities to support Eastern Ontario and municipalities throughout Eastern Ontario and Ontario through that period. Next slide, please. There's two slides in here, I won't go through these in in detail, but i-if you have questions, I'm always open to them, but essentially, there's a lot of turmoil right now in the telecommunications market in Canada, uh, between privatization, uh, debt loads and um, and selling off of vertical and and assets that they've owned as they try to focus back into core business. Um, so just for the council, uh, for county council, just there is a lot of discussion going on. Direct impacts for us, though, Rogers, who is our partner, have partnered with Blackstone Networks and have come to a financial arrangement where they've uh, entered into around their transport network, so although it doesn't do, doesn't directly impact the services we're providing, it does add a little bit of a wrinkle that kept us on our toes to work through that, to make sure we were okay. Redwood Infrastructure is an organization that you may start, or your your municipalities may start hearing a little bit more about. They are doing a great deal of work for Rogers and the ASAP project, and they're actually placing a lot of the facilities in the roadways or the rightaways on their behalf. The next slide, please, it's just more of that, so just Bell Canada again, sold off a lot of their uh, the MLS esports, made a little bit of money off that, seemed to be a good investment for them, uh, they've reinvested that into actually an American company, which is uh, a little bit of a different path for them to have taken. Uh, and as well as you're seeing a lot of Telus Rogers selling off their vertical real estate, which is their towers, to third-party providers. Next slide, please. So just around our strategic plan, um, in June, next slide, please. In June of twenty-twenty-four, uh, we settled on the final strategic plan and started the communication. This is with the support of our Board of Directors and our staff to come up with what our next five-year plan would look like. There is a realization and understanding that the cell gap project will come to an end of life, and through that, we are looking for other opportunities where an organization like EORN would be able to support municipalities from a regional perspective. And really what we were looking at was opportunities where uh, there may be projects that, from either a regional perspective or from a technical perspective, or just from a pure size, municipalities or counties may not have the staff to be able to support a regional-type initiative. So from that, we changed our letters of patent in twenty-twenty-four, which is not something that often happens in an organization like ours, so that was a learning for us. But we've changed that now that we're under a non-for-profit uh, status. We are able to support projects now under four key areas. Uh, project management services, which is, uh, we do have currently two project managers who are uh, working on our current project, as well as some other programs. The infrastructure project services, uh, we are supporting uh, the Frontenac Municipal Service Corp uh, through some of the CMHC funding that we received in the decentralized projects. We are working on some business cases for MSCs, uh, so municipal service corporations, um, and looking at large infrastructure projects that may be able to benefit across municipal boundaries. Technology service support, so we are looking at cybersecurity, some AI applications, things like this, to uh, digitalization is another big one that we we did uh, work in some of the permit central space before. We are looking at uh, opportunity to modernize and digitalize some of the municipal space if those are uh, if those municipalities are open to that, and then just general municipal support. We do work closely with the EOWC, the EOMC and the OLC, it's a lot of E's in Eastern Ontario, uh, to provide uh, to make sure all these projects align, and we're we're optimizing the resourcing that's available. Next slide, please. Just under our current initiatives, so a few of them, so we've developed a successful and uh, successful implementation of the duty-to-console process that took uh, the EORN team about thirteen months of uh, very focused work to come to a uh, understanding on what that consultation, what a meaningful consultation would look like, uh, as well as the mitigation plans and communication plans that came through that. We're working currently on an automated speed enforcement uh, introduction uh, with Lanark County, so this is the speed cameras, uh, but from a end-to-end process, taking all of that accountability on, um, and understanding what the management and implementation of a program look looks like that across multiple municipalities in Eastern Ontario. We're working with the Canadian Internet Registry Authority, so CIRA, uh, to test the broadband performance, and this is something that we are looking to municipalities to help us collect data on. It's actually a test where residents can test their data speeds, the broadband speeds, and it's registered, so we have a better understanding of where there might be gaps in the current or future footprints, and we can work with the province uh, to identify those gaps and find meaningful ways to try to close those. We are working on the very last premise project right now with the province, so some of the data that we've been able to collect, we've identified some large gaps that were missed through the ASAP program. We have written a business plan and presented that to the province. We're just waiting for confirmation uh, on that right now, that we'll be able to proceed, but looking to close some of those gaps as well. We are working on a digital twin project, so for twelve people, we have a lot in the go right now, so. Uh, we are working on a digital twin plan, which is similar to what you'll see in urban areas, but we're focusing on rural areas where we can look at uh, the status of the assets and the networks, whether it be roads or uh, utilities, and uh, highlight those and make sure we have an understanding where those might be. And we are also looking at a regional procurement model to see if there are opportunities there. So we have cybersecurity as an example, but a recent one that came up was around insurance. Uh, so exploring opportunities there where there might be a financial and logistical benefit to municipalities to help support them through some of those things. Next slide, please, I think that's it. Oh, sorry, the CERA performance, and this is just a view of CERA, what it looks like at a high level. Um, again, looking for municipalities uh, to to help push this product with local residents, just so we can have a better understanding where the true gaps may be in the broadband networks. Final slide, I think, there we go, questions? Oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, I just would like to um, thank all of the municipalities and staff. I know it's not easy uh, to go through the land use authority process. I know that there have been struggles in most of the municipalities, it's hard, especially with all the beautiful lakes you have here, um, and there's concerns, so uh, we wanna just thank everybody for their hard work. And I do have, um, I'm not sure if you um, are, follow us on LinkedIn, but we were able to um, connect with a business, they're a campground in um, the Frontenac, in Frontenac County, and because of the infrastructure that's gone in, they're now able to um, run their business much more effectively. They're able, they're using the um, internet portion um, from Rogers as well as the cell um, for their own personal use, but they're able to now do online bookings, they're able to offer service to their their uh, campers when they come in, and it's really truly changed how they do business, so it is making a difference. So thank you for all your hard work and helping us get these towers um, through your your land use authority.
Thank you. Questions? Well, look at that, oh, councillor McKechnie.
Yeah, um, in Dysart, could you give us a, like a short update on, it says here, um, construction plans for uh, Curry, Kinesis and um, one other one. Indian Point Road.
I can't see it on the slides that we printed off here, so I'll have to take a look at it, but.
Yeah, just just a quick update, or if you, or if you want to contact me later, that's.
Maybe, maybe we can follow up, we can try to get more of a detail, because right now it'd be.
Yeah, so I'm going to association meeting, so I know I'm gonna be asked.
This weekend?
Yes.
By any chance, the long weekend, so of course, yeah, yes, so why don't we get you a more detailed response on it?
I'd really appreciate that.
Okay, we can do that.
Other questions? Councillor Raff?
Yeah, this is a good, quick question on uh, on on third party, I guess, I'm not sure if third party is the right term, but when all of this gets done, there are going to be some some areas that I can think of that perhaps won't get the level of coverage that they probably would want. However, it opens an opportunity for smaller organizations to to go in and fill the gap for those particular areas, there might be as many as fifty, sixty uh, residences that may or may not be able to get the full services. Uh, I know they've done that Kingston, Napmany, Bellville area, and they've grown some small businesses uh, that that have employed people in that area. Do you see with with what you currently know and and the attitude or approach that Rogers was taking, will that be an opportunity for us and entrepreneurs in our area to take advantage of that?
So the, on the colocation portion with the infrastructure we're building, we are building it, or the specs that we've issued are to be able to support colocations, so whether, so whether carriers could co-locate on that space if they so require or wish to, and they'd have a business plan to do so. Um, I think, though, what you're referring to, and I could be wrong, correct me if I am, is a lot of those businesses are around small ISPs that have been created or are providing services. The very last prem program that we're working on is actually, we are looking to work with some of those providers that you might be thinking of, to try to close some of those gaps where you're talking fifty, sixty homes or seasonal cottages, we're working through that right now, and the provinces just provided us in the last two months, a fairly detailed map on where those areas might be. So we are just working through that and then working, trying to work with some local providers who really know these areas better than some of the larger providers as well. So I would suggest, based on the conversations we've had with the province in the last few months, there is an openness and an understanding that local carriers do have benefits, uh, they just wouldn't be able to do the large-scale initial ask that the province wanted, which was to cover the whole province as quickly as possible. I think now that we're starting to really, uh, the the mass is done, they're starting to understand where the gaps are and that there's that appreciation that local providers can actually support that, and they're, they are open to those discussions. I don't know if they'll land on the Rogers infrastructure, because I find a lot of those small ISPs find it more um, economical to build their own network and own it, so there are some challenges there, but I do believe that there will be some funding available to help support some of those gaps.
Sis, go ahead.
I'm I'm not as sure how it works, my technology is virtually almost zero, if not totally limited. Um, but what I'm hearing from the way it works, they're actually drawing their signal from the Rogers Tower to a smaller tower, and then they're using that because they're building a tower, so they're able to communicate directly with whoever they are in that area, be it Bell, be it Rogers. And then from there, broadcast over the the area that they want to cover, which may or may not be able to be covered by the Rogers Tower, that's, I think that's the idea that I'm getting and I'm asking.
They they could do that, that is an option, they could be wholesaling uh, backhaul services from Rogers or Bell or one of the primary carriers, that is a possibility. A lot of the carriers that we've been working with, though, have gone where they provide their own backhaul, so there's a mixed model, but that is an option, and groups like Bell and Rogers do wholesale uh, backhaul facilities to be able to enable that.
Resolution? Sorry.
Just a quick comment, it's exciting to see the diversification that Eorn is looking at, and I think that it offers a lot of exciting opportunities for both Eorn and for all of the municipalities and counties, so exciting to see how that goes forward.
Um, that the uh, EORN cell gap project update presented, uh, a presentation be received as information.
Someone move, councillor McKechnie, second by councillor, councillor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
We're down to the consent agenda?
Um, sorry, that the items listed under the heading of consent agenda for May fourteenth to uh, twenty-twenty-five be adopted as presented.
Councillor Carter, second by councillor McKechnie. All in favor? It's carried. Consideration for reports, office of the CEO?
Yep, uh, thank you, uh, Warden Burton, just an updated uh, update information for council, um, the County of Halliburton, being part of the Coretha Lakes Halliburton OHT or Ontario Health Team, um, are submitting an application for the expansion of the uh, um, primary care uh, or doctor recruitment, basically physician, professional physician recruitment piece. Um, this is the part of the project where Dr. Jane Philpott is running the for the province, where within next three years, uh, all residents of Ontario will have a primary family physician by that within three-year period. Um, the first intake of that, it's a one-point-eight billion-dollar project, but the first intake coming was submitted on May second. Um, we're included, and it's done by postal code, and we're included in the KOM postal code, which is quite a a large swath of land, uh, as you can see in the map within the report. Uh, the good news is it um, it identifies access to, over the period of the program, we currently have almost seven thousand residents in our Ontario team without uh, attachment to a primary care physician. Um, under the new program is you're looking at adding one additional salaried physician, three more, what they call blended model physicians, uh, four nurse practitioners, and almost fourteen FTEs regarding um, inter, what they call interprovincial healthcare providers, uh, registered nurses, social workers and dieticians into the program. Um, it will be, it's being run through um, the uh, the group, about two areas, the two medical areas will be set, one in Cobicock, but one in. the group, about two areas, the two medical areas will be set, one in Cobicconk, but one in the Minden Health Hub, um, where these will be located. And under the program is you're looking at seeing an initial intake by the end of twenty twenty-five, an additional eight hundred patients attached to primary healthcare in Halliburton, going through to the end in March twenty-eight, uh, March twenty-twenty-eight is the, that would be the goal of the full attachment for all residents of uh of Halliburton within the program. We're anticipating uh an approval or a recognition of the the go-ahead for the program in July of this year from the province. Uh, the application was submitted in in May, um, and it's it's, uh, we can make that, the full application available, council, you want to take a look at it, but it's 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 quite involved, including virtual medicine and and to really expand the access for all our residents. Um, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a great step forward for the advancement of healthcare in Halliburton, as well as across the entire province. And then with that, Warden Burton, uh, asks that the report be received and that we send a letter of support on behalf of the county through the province.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Ralph?
Yes, uh, just just one question. Do you know if if uh this is going to include any expansion or duplication or somewhere another growth of uh walk-in type clinics whereby we've got physicians, but uh for whatever reason, we're gonna be able to do it like the one we have in Minnan, perhaps an expansion of that?
Not specifically. I can't answer that directly, but I know within the program, within the um the the virtual intake part of it, it's gonna increase access in that fashion. Um, but I think the details will become later, once the the whole program itself is is, but I can't specifically speak to that.
Counselor Downes?
I it's my understanding is that there's, in Ontario, the the physicians, they're, they're in groupings of how they, they're um they they function as an operation standpoint, and I think that's what it is, but I that I don't know. I could get that information.
Counselor Day.
Uh, thanks very much. This is really interesting news. What about those uh members and citizens of Halliburton who fall outside of this catchment area? For example, the P O As up in the north, will we have access to how they're faring in terms of the kind of support they're getting in in their catchment area? Or is there any communication with with that health team to make sure they're covered as well?
Through your, we can, we can reach out and and find that out for information for it. This is, this is all directly through our Ontario Health Team, but I think that would be pretty easy to 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 develop that contact information to keep tabs on that.
Counselor Carter.
So, and obviously, this is kind of light on details, uh, so don't exactly know um how this is gonna work. And like, any expansion of healthcare is um is welcome news uh in this area. My only concern is that I, you know, I'm assuming that we are going to be, according to this, expanding the um the situation in Minden with the um with the provision of services by the the uh nurse practitioners, it'll, it'll go on to doctors and so on. The issue is, is that is not a Halliburton solution that's run by North Corea. And my fear is that Halliburton's whole medical services will be absorbed into Corea Lakes. In other words, we will just become, you know, sort of an offshoot of a of a Corea Lakes um situation. And uh I personally feel that, you know, a Halliburton solution is something that is uh to be strived for. Um, it's something that, you know, would hopefully have healthcare working with us in the community. It's so that we can provide the services that we need. And uh, so I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, Corea Lakes is just absorbing us, and I don't see that as being a good thing in the future.
Um, the only thing I can speak towards um your comments, counselor, is is that there's been no indication of that in the meetings I've been involved with. Um, the, the reason it's being set up this way is this is how the province is is dictated, that this pro, particular program would be run out, would be, would be run out. Um, it wasn't initiated, the parameters of the program weren't initiated by, locally. Corea Lakes, uh, to your point, um, this is, it's dictated by the province, is very clear, is very structured, how the programs would be laid out and how they'd be administered. Um, however, having said that, and and we'll be looking at moving, bringing some more information to council going forward, looking at the totality of the healthcare um aspects of healthcare across Halliburton County going forward. Because I do think, and I do support your comments with respect to, we have a, as a, as county council and and county administration, we have a large role to play and an important role to play in making sure and analyzing how that healthcare is being provided. And I'm not just, in this case, I'm not just talking about primary healthcare. Um, we're talking about the expanded healthcare, the wraparound services being into mental health, being into the outreach programs, into the community. Uh, even insofar as our EMS program, as well as how do we adapt the EMS program? And looking at advancing um advancing and and maturing, if you will, our doctor recruitment, and not only doctor recruitment, but the uh, the 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 healthcare professional recruitment programs specifically to meet the needs of Halliburton. Um, and so I've been working with Chief Slatter and and Ms. Tiffin on, we'll be bringing a more detailed report back to council that talks about, first of all, giving us an inventory of what actually is the healthcare provision status across the board in the county, which currently it's it's kind of all over the yard a little bit, and then kind of bring it back in, so we understand what we're actually getting, more importantly, what we're paying for, and where we can actually and create inflection points for council into making sure that the the needs and the service levels, particularly Halliburton County residents are being met, or conversely, provide solutions or opportunities where we can improve upon them. So my hope is to have at least that initial piece of that report back to council um by the end of June. Um, and then it's a good starting point for it, but your point's well taken, is we need to make sure, because of the way um all healthcare services are delivered um across the province, because it's, most of them are non-jurisdictional to the county, is that we understand what's happening and and where we can, what role we need to play to ensure that we're getting the services we need.
Well, good.
Yeah, I think the, you know, obviously, this program that is being done, uh, I mean, we're, we're talking about healthcare for millions of people in Ontario who are, you know, not necessarily covered adequately at the, at this time. And so whenever you're dealing with these, this macro issue, and you're sitting in somewhere on University Avenue, um, the people tend to become, you know, somewhat secondary to the, to the, the problem. And, you know, this is a real personal issue when it gets down uh to the retail level. And, you know, that's where I'm concerned that, you know, some decisions will be made for expedience purposes or whatever. It's a lot easier to just roll it up in into one big center. You know, I I firmly believe that if the government had their choice, there'd only be one hospital in Ontario and be really big, but um, and and efficient, but unfortunately, it's not very personal to what we need. So I I'm, I've just heard some of the lobbying and 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 know some of the players involved here. And, you know, the, the individuals in Halliburton County who are, who I, and I think everybody at this table are the most concerned about, and we have to make sure that that is uh done right.
It's, the point will take in council, but will I just reiterate the fact is that the meetings I've been involved with, there was a lot of attention given to Halliburton specifically. Uh, Dr. Hay sits there as as well on the, on the oversight committee with with myself. Uh, and he's very vocal about the needs of of Halliburton itself, and to the point where I have a meeting with Dr. Hay um, coming up, uh, to speak specifically about the identification of the Halliburton needs, as well as the advancement of our doctor recruitment program, as well as looking at specific, um, and these will obviously come before council for consideration, upgrades into our, into our EMS program uh, to support and augment what we're getting through the expanded professional healthcare program that we're talking about today.
Counselor Ralph?
Yeah, one of the things, too, that that I can say is being involved with the the merger of the health unit. Um, the, the, the whole place of rural Ontario, and in this particular case, also Halliburton County in general, is not being lost. It totally is not being lost, uh, and it, and they're being explored. Now, bear in mind, there are priorities that perhaps um are not high for us, but are high for other people, but that's part of the deal. We, we can't be the focus of everything. But we're not being forgotten at that particular entity and the province itself. I'm not talking about the ministries. I'm talking about the actual individuals who work with us from the various ministries. They, they are very understanding of what we're doing and what we're trying to do across a whole region that is now being covered by the health unit. So I, I have a tendency to be a little more optimistic in in thinking that along the lines of what uh, Mr. Dyke is saying is that I think we're going to see a slightly different approach, only because that uh, Hall, Hall, Hallburton County has has a very high voice and recognition in a lot of this stuff.
Counselor Downes?
I was just gonna say that I agree to refer to future reports, just indicating what changes or impact you know, this may have on, on how we perceive the professional.
Yeah, it just not pointing, it, that, our, our, what hope will be our new program will be fully integrated into this, because this is a starting point. This is creating the framework, then we have to populate going forward.
Resolution?
Uh, staff report C O zero-three twenty-two-five interprofessional primary care uh team expansion proposals will be received in information, and the county council provide a letter of support for polls with the Minister of Health, and a report, the C O, C A O zero-three twenty-two-five be provided to the county Halliburton member municipalities for their information.
Counselor Downes, second by Counselor Perry. All in favor? It's carried. Hey, I believe we're down to planning, license of occupation agreement, accessible, structure and encroachment into Halliburton County Road Nine, McGilvy Road.
Morning. Morning. Thank you, Warden. And I just have a brief presentation here for council. Uh, and this is for an application for a license of occupation uh agreement, and it affects the lands at thirteen fifty-three McGilvery Road in Highlands East. Excellent. So just for context, the property is about five kilometers southwest of Cardiff, and it's right at the Narrows on the west side of the bridge between Upper and Lower Potash, and it's just north of Highway twenty-eight, and it's shown by that yellow star on the screen. It's a fairly small property. It only has a lot area of sixteen hundred and fifteen square feet, and it's got fifty-four feet of frontage on County Road Nine. And the property historically was developed with a cottage and then various uh outbuildings. And the reason we're here today is because the owner had uh approached Highlands East to expand the existing cottage, and that building looked fairly close to being on the border of the shore road. So the applicant or the owner was advised to uh start the shore road uh purchase process and to obtain a survey of the subject lands. Excellent. So when the survey came back, the property is highlighted in green, and the shore road is immediately south, uh, shown as part two. So when the survey came back, there were a number of encroachments noted by the surveyor. Uh, and in this case, for our purposes, there were uh four structures located on the county road allowance. So those are shown in red. So at the north end of the property, there's a small storage shed, and then you've got an open deck moving south and a small portion of the corner of a septic tank, uh, that's just over the lot line. And then finally, there's a board-on-board privacy fence that basically goes across uh the entire flange of the property on the east side, uh, right down to uh where the bridge basically starts, and that's shown in that red dashed line. So subsequent to the survey information, Highlands East Council did pass a resolution to approve in principle sale of the shore road, but with a condition that the structures that are encroaching on the county road allowance be resolved, and that's basically why we're here today. Uh, so with approval of that license of occupation agreement, uh, that will allow the applicant to then move forward to apply for any permits or planning approvals needed from Highlands East. Excellent. So the license uh of occupation agreement itself, amongst other things, it provides maintenance access clauses for public works if they need to enter on the land to do any uh maintenance. And most importantly, includes a liability insurance uh for the county, naming the county at the amount of five million dollars. Um, this application was reviewed by planning and county public work staff. Public Works did not have any concerns with these small structured encroachments. There's no plans at this time to do any type of roadwork or widening on County Road Nine in this area. And uh, once this agreement is executed with the owner, uh, the applicant can then move forward to obtain any permits or approvals from the township. So staff recommend approval, and next steps will be that the applicant will uh basically sign back the agreement and provide us with the proof of insurance, and then we can move forward and notify Highlands East that uh everything's been met. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Mary?
What's the fee? How much?
The fee for the license of occupation? Um, it was submitted to Public Works originally, uh. I think it was in the ballpark of about four hundred dollars. Um, but I can get back to you on that. It was submitted through the permit system, through Public Works, and then it was uh planning took, took it over.
Counselor Carter?
Yeah, I think this is, you know, an issue that goes beyond this uh, this particular project. Um, you know, I don't know if if we put some sort of um uh, I don't know, a proviso in there that says, okay, you have a license of occupation, but you must buy the shore road allowance within a certain time period? Or or something like that? The issue on those, um, you know, the the rumblings I've been hearing, and we're gonna hear quite a bit in lake associations over the next short while, with the short-term rentals are the, you know, this insurance situation. A, I'm not sure that the insurance is going to be readily available to people, and then what do you do if it isn't? And then the second part is people complaining about the size of, or the, you know, the amount of insurance. Um, and, you know, we need it for our, we being the municipalities, need it for our own protection. Uh, because if something is, is to happen in on an area that we're licensing to somebody, we, you know, it's just like when we rent out the fairgrounds or or anything like that. So, I, you know, this is gonna be a big issue, and I think we have to, as much as possible, get people to buy those shore road allowances as quickly as possible, and not just allow a license of occupation that goes on forever.
Listen, you have. Any other comments or questions? Andrew, go ahead.
Uh, I can just confirm that the fee within the fee bylaws, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, I was close.
Uh, it's stated it's the fee for the agreement.
That, that would be the review fee? That, if I'm correct, Andrea?
I'm gonna get, I'm gonna let, so the director of planning answer that. Uh, thank you through you, Warden. Uh, I can confirm there's no annual fee at the county for licenses of occupation, just the initial application fee.
Resolution?
Uh, that report, PLN zero-eight twenty-two-five license of occupation agreement for accessory structure encroachment on the County Road Nine, McGilvery Road allowance be received, and the Halliburton County Council entered into a license of occupation agreement with Philip Townley, that will acknowledge the structure encroachment under the county road allowance and permit the continued use and occupation of a portion of the County Road Nine road allowance for accessory structures. And the staff presented bylaw to Halliburton County Council authorized in the warden and clerk to execute the agreement.
Someone move. Counselor Downes, and second by Counselor Perry. All in favor? Carry. Uh, advancing integrated watershed management planning in the Muskoka River watershed.
Thank you, Warden Burton. Um, the Muskoka River watershed travels across a portion of both the township of Algonquin Highlands and municipal municipality of Dysart Aile. Um, in November twenty-twenty-four, staff from the county and both municipalities were invited to participate in a session facilitated by the District of Muskoka to discuss Integrated Watershed Management, or I W M, strategies for the Muskoka River watershed. Uh, for council's benefit, I W M is generally referred to as a modern approach to environmental management, which integrates information. Which integrates information and decisions made to achieve collective watershed wide goals. Uh, such I W M goals typically include one or more of the following. Uh, maintaining or improving water quality, flood control, forest management, effective planning and community, community development. Uh, and or economic development. Coming out of the November meeting, the District of Muskoka has requested that each municipality brings forward a report to their coun, for their council's consideration. To participate in the I W M initiative for the Muskoka River watershed. Uh, participation in the initiative would be mutually beneficial for both the county and the district. Um, on one hand, the district benefits from the county's participation as the county. Contains the upstream area of the watershed and generally speaking, what happens upstream impacts the areas downstream. Um, conversely, participating would benefit the county as it would allow us to tap into the resources. And knowledge already curated through and by the district, uh, if we ever wanted to review our existing policies and programs or implement new ones. Uh, in the future, instead of starting from scratch and expending greater resources to do so. Um, at this point, council will just be considering whether the county should have a seat at the table. No financial or resource commitment, aside from some staff time, is being asked for at this time. Uh, given this, it's staff's recommendation to participate in the initiative, however, any further commitment being requested of the county. Would be brought to council for consideration if as needed, um, and at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have, thank you.
Questions? Mary?
Well, first of all. This, this leads them into part of our planning process, if this goes the way I think it's going to go. And I don't want Muskoka telling us how to do any of our planning, because Muskoka developed way before us. Our shorelines are more, ten times more natural than theirs are, if you've been to the lakes of Muskoka, you could see that. I don't want them telling us how to plan when we're, our planning is ahead of theirs, if you understand what I mean. And, and, and this is just a red herring, this is the same thing that we hear all the time. They start off, it doesn't cost anything. It won't be a year till they'll have a consultant hired and we're going to be on the hook for more money. Look, we're doing a decent job on our own, with shoreline improvement, with uh, the septic re, I think we can do it for ourselves here. And I'm certainly opposed to uh, to anything, it doesn't affect Daisert at all hardly. And I don't even know what, how, we, we had them at council and not being nasty about it, but he could not tell me specifically what the benefit was. And, and we've got to stop reaching out, like, I know you could go to the meetings or we could go to the meetings, but that staff time, not your time. And then, and uh, how many people would be at these meetings, or it looks like there's going to be thirty or forty people there? You can't get anything done with thirty or forty people, anyway, I, I'm, I'm against it, but uh, that's me.
Counselor Downeson?
Um, I, I've been to a number of the Muskoka Watershed Council meetings, um, I do think that there's an awful lot of. Really valuable information that is shared, of course, Algonquin Highlands is, has a lot more impact than, than Daisert at all. Um, I, I share your concerns about another level of control and one of the things in the report that kind of raised my eyebrows was the. Um, the level of input that they might have into economic development and or planning. Um, but at the same time, I think it's really important that we do have a seat at the table, so we do know what they're doing. And we have a voice at that table, uh, so, you know, for, for that reason, I think it's probably a good idea for us to have a seat. At the table, so we also have a voice.
Gary?
Just to, just to add to uh, Counselor Fury's comments and, and they're well taken, however, I would note that. The, this body would have no authority over planning decisions. Or any, any of the economic decisions we make a, at the county, um. I, I think right now it's an information share thing, i- and, and also with respect to, is one of the first questions I asked, uh, Ms. Purcell was. The, the financial side of it, and there is no direct financial side of it to, at this time. Um, but having said that, even if there became one, that would still be a decision of council whether or not to participate, right? This is simply a matter of um, um. Of having somebody there from the informational standpoint, because of the impact, the, of the shared impact between the watersheds. But I do appreciate your comments around, like, the institutional creep, if you will, with, between organizations. But I, I think that is a, we are protected, there's another layer of approvals that would have to happen for that to occur.
Very good.
Also, I see they want, they want a, an M O U, memorandum of understanding with us. I, I hope that comes here for approval before we do that.
Lizbus, go ahead.
Uh, through you, Warden, uh, just for clarification, I believe the M O U um, or cord would be related to. How the, the consortium or the group that's been assembled would operate and what their mandate would be and, and what their, their. Um, priorities would be to look at, just to more so guide that group. Um, rather than us as a county.
Counselor Ralph?
I, I certainly share the concerns that uh. That Counselor Ferry has, has brought forward, on the other hand, I also share the, the idea of uh, finding out what the hell's going on. Uh, which is what uh, Counselor Downeson has been saying. If we were to, first off, the, the M O U would have to be defined and approved by us, or at least in some way, shape, we're involved. But the content of that doesn't bother me, because if we don't like it, we don't sign, that's the, that too. Uh, my question would be, if something were to start going south that we didn't like. We have the ability to withdraw at any point in time from the organization with no liability on our part, is that correct?
Uh, through you, Warden, yes, that's, that's my understanding.
Any other questions, comments? Just, do you have something? Your favorite?
Uh, resolution. That staff report P L N zero nine twenty twenty-five be received and that the plant, director of planning be appointed as a member of the Muskoka River said, sorry. Of the Muskoka River Watershed Consortium.
Could someone move, Counselor Downeson, second by Counselor Dayu? All in favor, it's carried. Uh, bylaws, consideration of bylaws?
Uh, be it resolved, a bylaw forty-three oh four, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a license of occupation agreement with Philip Townley, be considered to be read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
Could someone move, Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Dayu? All in favor, it's carried? Confirmation by law?
Uh, that bylaw forty-three oh three, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the May fourteenth twenty twenty-five meeting in Halliburton County Council be considered to be read a first, second and third time.
Someone move, Counselor Ferry, second by Counselor McCackney. All in favor, it's carried? Seems way too early to be adjourned.
That the May fourteenth twenty twenty-five meeting at Halliburton County Council be adjourned at ten, ten a.m.
If someone move, Counselor McCackney and Counselor Ferry. All in favor, it's carried, thank you.